Sorry, Madam Treasurer.
What was that for there? We do have a presentation today?
Yes. Okay. We're going to call the Wednesday, February 21st, 2018 School Board Meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye, here.
Ms. Karstarfen?
Here.
Mr. Bax?
Here.
Mr. Elick?
Here.
And Mr. Gebhardt?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Legits. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Quick introductions. To my far right is Board Member Jim Bax. To my direct right is Board Member Greg Elick. I'm Kevin Brubaker. To my left is Vice President Annie Karstarfen. Her left is Senior Board Member Mike Gebhardt. Senior Superintendent Dr. Tom Janna. And our esteemed Treasurer, Joy Clickinger. Do we have any board recognition tonight? None? Presentations. Madam Treasurer?
Yes, I think she's just getting here, but I would like to introduce Lindsey Kuhn from the Auditor of State's office. She has an award that she would like to present that I'm pretty excited about.
Very timely.
Yes.
If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. My name is Lindsey Kuhn, and I'm with the Auditor of State's office. And this is not a shakedown. I feel like oftentimes people hear the State Auditor's office and then turn off their ears, but this is actually really great news. This evening, I am very, very honored to present the Distinction Award to the school district, to your finance team, and of course, to you all. And I just would like you all to know that we audit about 1,500 government entities across the state of Ohio, but very few qualify to receive an award, let alone the Distinction Award. So we do offer awards across the state that are just called the Auditor of State Award. However, what you all are receiving is the Distinction Award, which is what my boss likes to say is the gold standard of audit reporting. So this is a real feather in your cap that you all work, of course, together in concert, and we certainly appreciate the fact that you all are such excellent stewards of taxpayer dollars, but this is really the top accomplishment that you can receive from our office. So with that being said, I would love to present you with this lovely certificate from the great auditor. Thank you so much for all you do.
Congratulations, Ms. Clickinger. Lindsey, if you could, if you could kind of give us a background on what you look for when you give out that award. What's the difference between that and...
Here, I'll steal this back.
I want to get a picture or two so I can make sure...
Of course. Absolutely. So, and not to get too into the weeds here, but I am going to read just the juicy parts of this letter from the great auditor because it actually explains... I know, I thought I'd give them the lesson. It explains a little bit about what it means to have a clean audit, and that means... Let me find the good stuff here. So there were, we didn't find any findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or questionable costs. And so we are, of course, not going in there to play gotcha, but we want to make sure that all of your Ts are crossed and your Is are dotted, things are reconciling. But there's just so much more involved in, you know, having a clean audit. Certainly, just like everything in education, everything changes from day to day in the audit world, and so this is truly an accomplishment that your folks... I know that you've got an excellent finance team, and of course, your treasurer, they are experts in their field, and they are working every day to, like I said, be excellent stewards of taxpayer dollars, and that's really what it comes down to. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lindsey. Appreciate it. Congratulations.
Did you want to... This isn't in this one?
Yes.
If I had them turned this way, I can get a freeze frame.
Oh, you can get a pic out of it.
Tom, you know what you're doing there with that camera?
That's why I'm sitting back down. That's why I'm sitting right back down, brother.
I hear ya.
Absolutely.
Way to go. Thank you, Lindsey.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Excellent news for the district. I'm not even sure if there's anybody can tell us if we've won this before, or...
I don't think so.
Does it ring a bell?
No.
Very well done to you and your team.
And I just want to make a few comments is that, you know, we do, we do get the excellence in education or in reporting, financial reporting and those, and those somewhat follow a pattern. As good as those awards are, it's, it's almost like once you get them, you'll probably continue to get them. This particular award is based on everybody pulling together, getting everybody to do everything the way you need it done, and I've got a staff. We don't necessarily make friends every day, but we do keep our thumbs on as much as we can, and that's what made this possible.
Once again, congratulations.
Thanks.
The next item here is Meter Investment Presentation.
Yes, I would like to invite Jason Headings and Eileen Stanek up. They are our investment advisors, and it had been requested by the board that we invite them in and let them tell us a little bit about themselves.
Okay. And once again, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Eileen Stanek, Senior Public Funds Advisor with Meter Investment Management. I'm a resident of the city of Illyria, resident of the Clearus Police School District as well. 275 Overbrook Road in Illyria.
Financial people living on Overbrook.
Yeah.
Jason Headings, Senior Vice President, Meter Public Funds, resident of Dublin, Ohio.
So as a Senior Public Funds Advisor with Meter, I serve as the hands-on person working with Joy and her staff to manage the district's investments. I've been working in the investment field with public entities here for almost 15 years and have over 30 years of investment-related experience.
And I've been with Meter just over 12 years now, so really put together a strategy from the investment standpoint for all our public funds clients as well as still seeing the day-to-day operations. We did put together a little information here to give you a little bit more background on who Meter is, how we interact with the district, as well as a little high-level, what's going on from an investment standpoint. So on page two, you see Meter's been around since 1974, so for over 40 years now. We did just cross $15 billion in assets under management. That's public funds within the state of Ohio. So in total, we're $18 billion, but 15 of that 18 is public funds within the state of Ohio, so very, very large portion of what we do, really focusing on schools, the State Treasurer's Office, we actually serve as advisors to them since 2001, but counties, cities, you name it, we probably work with them in one way, shape, or form. So very involved in all the law that goes along with this. And again, go back to the audit side, making sure we're dotting the Is, crossing the Ts, always in compliance from there. Page three gives you a little snapshot of other districts we're working with. We do work with over 200 entities here within the state of Ohio. Schools make up about half of those entities. So again, a lot of folks that we work with in this area also work with the city of Illyria. So at a high level, on page four, gives you a little feel for what it is we do on a day-to-day basis when we're engaged with the district. One of the things that makes Meter a little bit different is everything is customized in the district. As you all know, there's no cookie cutter approach. Everybody's in a different spot in the levy cycle, different projects going on. So really customizing the portfolio to be able to, and work with Joy to maximize the interest income that we can, working through, taking that more holistic approach. How much should we have in cash? How much should we be investing long-term? Making sure that we can meet all the payrolls, all the day-to-day operating needs with the building project, making sure that we have enough money coming due in time to meet any of those needs from the cash spend there, but at the same time, making sure we're maximizing the investments. On the investment management side of things, we do work with over 100 different brokers. We serve as a registered investment advisor, so we are working with those brokers to source all of the bonds, CDs, commercial paper that we have within the portfolio, to make sure that we're getting best pricing. From us, our standpoint, we don't make commissions, so we have, we're not incentivized to put you in one type of product over another. Our job is to get you into the best products possible, no matter what, from that standpoint. And then on top of that, the compliance monitoring, again, making sure that everything's up to speed. Anytime there's a change to higher laws code, you know, one of the nice things about our relationship with State Treasurer's Office is every time they're thinking about changing the laws, we always get a seat at the table. Do they always listen to us? No, but at least we know what's going on, and we can come back to you and say, okay, X, Y, and Z are happening, these are the things we need to be prepared for, we need to update our investment policy, and this is how it's going to change things going forward into the future. On page five gives you a little snapshot of the things we're looking at on a regular basis, as far as all the news coming from the Federal Reserve, what's happening from a growth standpoint going forward. Inflation being one of the big drivers right now from an economic standpoint. It does look like we're still going to continue to see a few rate hikes here this year, but from a Fed standpoint, they've said three. There have been some inflation fears creeping up a little bit here that may push that to four, but after that, it looks like the rate hikes are probably going to be pretty much gone. The market's really pricing in five rate hikes in the next five years, with most of them happening this year. So after that, things will be, you know, pretty stagnant, assuming nothing changes. But we all know that things can change very quickly from there, but these are just a few of the things that we're looking at on a regular basis as we evaluate our strategies for folks.
On page six, we start with a snapshot of the district's operating funds portfolio. As I had mentioned previously, I work closely with Joy and the Treasurer's Office in making certain that as investments are purchased, that we're being very cognizant of the district's forecasted cash flow needs, particularly focusing in on that five-year forecast, which, of course, is updated on a semi-annual basis. So as of Friday, the portfolio stood with just under $20 million invested, as we can see here, 19.6 million. The weighted average yield on that portfolio was a 1.71, which means that that portfolio of securities will generate for the district a little over $300,000 worth of interest on an annualized basis. We're very cognizant of diversifying the portfolio and making certain that any investments are compliant with not only Ohio revised code, but also the district's investment policy as well. So at, as of Friday, we had a mix of securities in the portfolio between government agency securities, FDIC insured CDs, and commercial paper. If we look at the bottom section of the, this page, we can see the maturity distribution shows us the, how the portfolio will mature here in kind of a bucket approach, so looking at the fact that we have very high concentration of funds maturing within the next year, and then funds scattered out with minimal investments maturing out in that three and four-year bucket, which based on the five-year forecast is appropriate for the district. The next page is the building fund. Very proud to be helping the district with the building fund and recognize it's a very important project, not only for the district, but for the city as well. So again, very similar approach in that we are making sure as we work with the Treasurer's Office that the investments, as they are placed, mature such that the funds are available to meet the spending, projected spending needs of the project. So at this point, there's $52.3 million invested in securities. That portfolio of investments is currently yielding 1.75%. Over the life of these holdings, the portfolio will generate a little over $1,750,000 worth of interest income. Again, the investments are diversified across the permissible investments for the district. And again, when we look at the bottom, at the maturity distribution, based on the projected spending of the project as we know it today, the bulk of the securities do mature here within the next year with, it's kind of a little deceiving, but I mean, $11.5 million is still quite a bit, maturing beyond one year. And we additionally have concentrated some of these investments with a shorter maturity to position the portfolio to be able to be flexible as the projects unfold and we have more clarity on the spending needs, and then additionally, being able to take advantage of this rising interest rate environment that we're in. The last page, on page eight, is the Debt Service Reserve Fund. This represents residual funds that were generated from the bond proceeds sale. This represents what's referred to as capitalized interest, and those, for audit purposes, those funds needed to be reported, managed separately from the other bond proceeds. Therefore, accounting for a separate portfolio. These funds will then be used to fund a portion of the next debt service payment, so this will be a very short-lived investment portfolio at this point.
So with that, any questions for us on who we are, what we do, how we interact with the district, the way we do strategy?
A question on, on the terminology you use as securities. That's, that appears to be mostly government securities, is that correct? I mean, none of these dollars are out there kind of in, you know, the stock market or anything like that, correct?
That's correct. Ohio Constitution precludes public entities and school districts from investing in stocks.
Right, okay. How long have we been with you?
Long time. Meter purchased productive capital management back in 2013, so that's when the relationships... Sorry, I believe then it was, gosh, I can't remember. No, I think it was the 90s when the productive relationship began.
Any other questions from the board?
What is, what is, you know, is, give me a general idea of what commercial paper is.
So commercial paper is corporate obligations that are less than nine months. So thinking of it as corporate bond only is maturing within nine months, so very short-term corporate debt. So under Ohio revised code, you're required to invest in the top tier, so they have to be rated A1 or P1 by S and P or Moody's. So investing in that, going back to the A1 is when they start a lot of these programs. No defaults and any issuers from there. We actually do an additional layer of credit research on each one of these issuers. We actually do all the credit research for the state of Ohio as well, so if at any point in time anyone wants to see a credit report on any of those names, we have those available. So one of the things we want to make sure is that not only are we investing in things that are permissible under Ohio revised code, but that we're investing in the highest quality of those things that are permissible in the case.
U.S. government agencies would include...
Yep. Federal Home Loan Bank, Freddie Mac, Fannie Mae, all of those types of agencies. So they have the, either implicit or explicit backing of the U.S. portfolio.
Where's our, what's our portfolio as far as in comparison to other government organizations? Would you consider it kind of middle-of-the-road, aggressive, you know, conservative? I mean, where do you see our mix at right now?
The mix is very standard, what you see across the state of Ohio. From a return standpoint, it's going to be towards the, the top end of what you're seeing from a lot of them. And I can give you a snapshot of what we've seen with some others. They tend to be where your yield's at a 1.71. Some of the others we've seen recently are closer to the 1.4, 1.45 range, so you certainly have a significant pickup over what others are doing from that front.
And a lot, well, what drives the return is the cash flow requirements of the district. So the fact that we are limiting the maturities on the operating funds such that we are not purchasing anything in four years or five years, maturity does serve to temper-bound that return.
And if you don't get commissions, how do you get paid?
Yep, so we have a flat fees on assets under management, so depending on the size of the portfolio, percentage.
What, do you know what the percentage is? How many bases?
Yep, so it's 10 basis points.
10, okay.
Actually, we're at nine.
Nine?
Yeah. So nine on this building fund, or five?
Oh, nine regular, five on the building funds? Okay.
So that'd be .09%, .05%.
And why is, just curious, why is the building fund less? Because it's so much shorter, or...
With building funds, what we tend to see is a lot of work upfront to get those initially put to work, but with those, we're not buying a lot of the callable securities and the strategies. So a lot of it is getting it laid out according to draw schedule, and then it's more administrative at that point in time. As we have maturities, if there's opportunities to reinvest, we will, but there's not as much of the day-to-day flows and the...
Okay. Great. Are you out of Columbus?
Yep, our headquarters is in Dublin, that's where we're based out of. Eileen, of course, is based out here in the northeast.
Maintain our presence in the northeast, go hiking.
Yeah. You try to drag her down there, but she won't do it.
Doesn't want to leave Overbrook, right?
I was born and lived in Dottie. I think I'll always live in Dottie.
Any other questions? Very good. Thank you to you both for your time and your information.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
All right, moving on down the list, visitors' comments. We do not have any this evening, so we will go to Board Member Discussion Items. You want to start, Mr. Bax?
You want me to?
Sure.
Sure. Okay. Just a couple of things. Well, actually, there's more than that, but wanted to make, just give some people here really a great high-five on the robotics tournament. Brian, you, Angela, Mike, great job on that. That was, I understand, that was your first one out of the chute, right? So it was really cool. And so I got the, I got the opportunity to work as a judge and to judge these things, and then you find out how much you really don't know about what you're doing, and I got an opportunity to do that, but it was a really neat day, and I think maybe next year, it went, or the next time you do this, I don't know, you might, you might look for another Master of Ceremonies. Mike started hamming it up there at the end. I think he started getting comfortable with it and really starting to get, getting into it, but it was...
I was young, Mr. Bax.
But, no, it, Mike and Stacy seemed to be right in the middle of that thing, and, but that was a great job, guys. It was, it was really fun, and I think the students were, I was thrilled with the kids. It was really, that was cool. Another neat one that we did, I did on the 12th, was you might be familiar with, Tom, you might be familiar with the Windsor Service Squad?
Absolutely.
Okay. Got an, got an opportunity to interview with them and answer some questions and do some things, and at the same time, we were able to arrange a Larry Road sponsorship for their T-shirt uniforms this year, so that was really nice, so I delivered that, I delivered those to them today, and, but that's really, that's really a neat little organization. That's very, very cool. And geez, other than that, oh, one other thing that was on the 15th, again, Mr. Basinski and I got the opportunity to do the Fine Dining Event at Northwood. And it was, Mike and I were just buddies all week. It was, it was amazing, and...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
But in any event, Sedexo and Mike again and Stacy pulled off a really cool little event, and that was the first one of those I had went to, but we had, I had a really good time. We had, the kids were, again, the kids were really, they were, that was really cool to watch, to watch them demonstrate the skills that they had, that they had learned. So that was, it was fun, but no, really, a very good week for me, so, so yeah, it was cool. I was glad to get around the district.
Intermission?
No, that's it, go ahead.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to say, I don't know if anybody saw it on TV last night, but the safest school in America is in Indiana, and it was very interesting, some of the things they've done, and I think we should maybe look at some of those things when we're building our new schools.
Yeah. Where was, where did you see that?
It was on the news.
Which channel, do you remember?
NBC.
Was it?
NBC.
Interesting. If I had to Google it.
They showed, they had bulletproof doors. They showed a line that the kids could stand behind, so if somebody looked in the window, they couldn't be seen. I thought that was interesting. All the teachers wore security things, which you pressed it, every teacher's would go off, and they knew something was on. The sheriff department had cameras that could see on where people were in the building and what was going on. They also had like smoke bombs or something that came out of the ceiling. You could, if there was somebody in, in that hallway, they could put these smoke bombs down and disorient them. Very interesting.
Wow. You know, talking about building schools, I was fortunate to hear from a lot of the citizens about our meeting with the, about the Northwood Project, and I think one recurring theme was that it seemed like the school district in the city were not in partnership on the school. So I think next time that we have a presentation like this, I think it's very important that maybe we work to appear better in partnership. That seemed to be the recurring theme from a number of people that I spoke with that had many different views on how the meeting went, but they all seemed to think that it did not appear that the city and the school district were a partner together, so that's what I hear. That is very concerning that we, I think we need to work a little bit better on for the next meeting, and maybe Dr. Janna will speak about that in his presentation.
Well, I too had an opportunity to attend the robotics thing, the first opportunity I had, and I was educated by one of the team members. I asked her to explain to me what was going on, and about 30 seconds into it, I had to stop her and said, "You got to bring it down to my level." I said, she's, then she just said, "Well, you just take the cone and put it on top of the other cone." I said, "That's all you had to tell me." But I was very well impressed with everything that went on, how it went, Mr. Basinski is the, and Stacy, to Brian and Anne and their teams, and just seeing the people that came far away from southern Ohio down on the West Virginia border to see our high school and watching them walking around inside that area and looking, and then watching the kids perform and do the things that they do, I was absolutely amazed. I think, Brian, you said this is what, year two of what we're doing? And to see that and the success that those kids had, and I believe we had a team that went to Lorraine this past week and won, or I saw something on Facebook where there's a picture of some...
Yeah, our high school team had the top school score, which was a title of the game.
Okay. So I was very well impressed with that. So congratulations to everybody on that. The other thing, on the Friday night before that, I've been to several events in the PAC Center, the award ceremonies, the grades, the, some concerts, and I got to attend, I probably still don't know your, that's okay, Jim stole mine. But I got to attend the, and they came for us, play, and my wife and I went, and I'm a World War II, I hate to say it this way, but concentration Auschwitz kind of person. I'm very interested in that stuff, and I've read about this and saw movies, but to see it played out with young people acting and portraying people that went through that and seeing the passion that they put into it. Tim just absolutely dumbfounded me. I've seen movies, I've read books, but to see it played out in a docudrama and then on the stage like that, I'm a proud individual, but I can tell you it brought tears to my eyes to see that, the way it went, and kudos to everybody that was involved with that. I was thoroughly impressed with it. So congratulations on that. Annie?
Ditto. Yeah. I was going to say that. It was just absolutely awesome. My family went, and we, when it was over, you're just standing there, you, you want to leave, but you're like, "Oh, my goodness, this was unbelievable." It was beautiful. It made you continue to think, but you wanted to share it with someone else, and so I went on Facebook and asked everyone, "If you just could make time to go up to the high school, it was worth every effort." the high school, it was worth every effort. It was beautiful."
Absolutely. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on. Approval of Board Minutes. To approve the Board of Education Record of Proceedings for the meetings of February 3 and February 7, 2018, as detailed in enclosure G1. I will assume that everybody had a chance to read those. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Still move.
Moved by Ms. Karstafen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gebhardt. Any discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye. Motion carried. Treasurer Action Items?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item is to accept the financial report for the month of January 2018, which includes all bank reconciliations, the investment report, the cash balance report, and the appropriation and expense reports as detailed in enclosure G1. Secondly, to acknowledge, express appreciation, and accept the gifts as listed in the agenda.
Very good. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the items as demonstrated by the treasurer.
Some of.
Moved by Mr. Elick, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bax. Discussion. Seeing done, Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye. Motion carried. Treasurer Report Other?
I just want to mention that we will be sending out the public notice to cancel the April 25th Board Meeting because there were quite a few conflicts, and to reschedule anything just got out of hand. So, we'll be canceling that one. There'll be one Board Meeting in April, April 11.
Anything on the OFCC, OSFC?
No.
No. Dr. Jama, Superintendent Action Items?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make the following recommendations under Superintendent Action Items for the board's consideration this evening. Item number one, to approve the overnight field trip for the Alaria High School students participating in the Special Olympics to Ohio State University in Columbus on June 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, 2018, as detailed in enclosure K1. Item number two, to authorize the student transportation contract between the Alaria City School District, Board of Education, and the Educational Alternatives to provide daily door-to-door special education transportation throughout the 2017-2018 school year as detailed in enclosure K2. Item number three, to approve the adoption of the school district calendar for the 2018-19 school year as detailed in enclosure K3. And I think you'll find out, again, this calendar starts again after Labor Day, and this was very positively received last year when we did this as a district. And I know the staff, the students, and the community are very appreciative of that. Item number four, to approve the 2018 officers for the Alaria City School Endowment Board. President Joel Siniger, Vice President Debbie Warden, Secretary Leanna Latte, and Treasurer Jim Bax. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations under Superintendent Action Items.
Thank you, Dr. Jama. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Gebhardt, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Karstafen. Any discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye. Motion carried. Superintendent Other?
I do not have any other items under Other, but I do have items under Personnel Action as recommended by the Superintendent, Mr. President, for the board's consideration. Item number one, to approve the unpaid leave of absence of the following certified staff as detailed below. Item number two, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff as detailed below. Again, this is adding additional substitute teachers to our rolls. Item number three, to approve the resignation of the following classified staff member as detailed below. Item number four, to approve the unpaid leave of absence of the following classified staff member as detailed below. Item number five, to approve the reassignment of the following classified staff member as detailed below. Item six, to approve the appointment of the following classified staff member as detailed below. Item number seven, to approve the athletic supplemental contracts of the following certified staff and non-employees as detailed below. These individuals have been vetted and do hold the appropriate credentials. Item number eight, to approve the following game workers for their athletic service as detailed below. Item number nine, to approve the appointment of the following EHS student workers as part of the rental team for the 17-18 school year for the Performing Arts Center at $12.50 per hour as detailed below. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations under Personnel Action as recommended by the Superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Jama. Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Mr. Bax, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Elick. Any discussion? Seeing done, Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye. Motion carried. Dr. Jama, Superintendent Report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items I would like to share with the board. First of all, congratulations to you, Joy, and to your department for doing an outstanding job and receiving this, this award. Again, it's a special award. It goes above and beyond the ones that we have received in the past. And it's a tribute to what you and your team are doing in that office each and every day. And again, it's by a strong team working together. So, congratulations on that. It's also nice to be able to share this type of information with our community as we go for renewal levy on the ballot again this coming fall. And it's always nice that we could share with the community that the, the district is fiscally responsible. So, congratulations again to you and to you, Ann, and to your department. Today, I had an opportunity to visit several buildings, but the one I want to speak about today is Prospect. They held their first, first, first responders reception whereby any of the first responders in Lorraine County, and there were Lorraine County Sheriff's deputies there, there were members of the Alaria Police Department, members of life care, the Alaria Fire Department came through, and they had a real nice spread of coffee, punch, lifesavers, and candy items to give to these individuals as they came into the building. Jessica and her team gave them a tour of the school, let them got to intermingle with the kids. And this is what it's all about. This is what it means, getting community into the schools and schools into the community. It's sharing that bond that we do have each and every day, and we're all working for the same cause. So, kudos to, kudos to Prospect. I believe Heather Hale had a big to-do with that, and she's an outstanding person. In fact, I'm going to be meeting with her tomorrow for a short time just to sit down and get some ideas, and she wants to share some of her research lately with Safe Schools and what we could do to even improve on the, the safety and security of our district. And speaking of safety and security, and it goes along a little bit with what you said, Mike and Jim, over the last week, week and a half, I have taken quite a few phone calls from parents who are very nervous, who are very concerned, very apprehensive to send their kids to school at times. I'll be very honest with you, after what happened in Florida. And I'm happy to say that each conversation I had turned out to be very positive. We, I shared openly with them what I was able to share with reference to what we do in the event of emergencies. I reiterated the situation we had last year at Alaria High School and how that was handled and how there are protocols in place to, to meet these, these needs if they would arise. And the biggest thing, some of the parents do want to hear though, and it's very difficult because you can't answer them, to what they want to hear is, they almost want you to guarantee their child's safety. Will you guarantee my child? And my reply is, ma'am or sir, I could never guarantee anything. I can't guarantee my own family's safety 100% of the time. And, but the conversations are very positive. I know Denise has, has spoken to some of those parents as well. And this is something that we will look at as a cabinet, we're going to meet on Friday to look at our, our protocols and our plans that are in place. And I'm not the type of person that says what we do is constantly right. If there's a way to change it or make it better, we're going to do that. And it's something that I'm very proud of with this team. So, but again, going along with the, the first responders, there was talk today, and I shared this with you, Kevin, there was talk today that there was going to be a walkout at Alaria High School. As we know, high schools throughout the country are walking out of schools and protesting of firearms and school safety and vigilance. I know Tim's working with several students at Alaria High School to, to put on or to partake in a, in a program that's organized and to make sure it's done absolutely correctly. So, that's something we're working on, on as well. I am sorry to hear what you said, Greg, earlier about the calls that you received with reference to that meeting last week at, at Northwood. And yeah, there's no doubt in my mind, we'll do what's necessary to make sure that that does not happen again. And we'll make sure that we, we address any issues that need to be addressed with reference to our next meeting, because we will be having those before each opening of any of the new schools. And not opening, but the, the start of construction, we'll be doing one here at Ely, probably within the next month and a half. So, so pretty exciting about that, but I will look into that and share that with my team as well as with Paul and make sure it doesn't happen. And with that, that's it.
Speaking of the school safety, all of us received an email today, and I know Dr. Jama responded, as well as I, to Mrs. Jablonsky, who had asked, and I think this is very important to, to bring out, particularly since this is on television, but she'd asked, she had heard that other school districts have a undocumented policy of arming teachers or staff in their schools, and it's not a publicly known thing. And she had asked two questions. One, if the Alaria City Schools had that policy? And two, was the school district looking at potentially bringing that to our district to allow our teachers or staff members to be armed in our schools? And I can speak from my knowledge that we do not have a policy that allows our staff or administration to have weapons in the school. We do have a resource officer at Alaria High School that is there, that is armed, but we do not have staff or administration. The second part of her question, and I can only speak from myself, and I know Dr. Jama, and he can answer his side of that, but I can only speak for myself, not on the board, but I am flat-out against coming up with a policy to, to arm our, anybody in our schools with the exception of obviously our resource officer. So, Dr. Jama, if you want to react to that.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. Mr. Brubaker, I could tell you this, and I'm glad you reminded me of this. Over the last week as well, I've had calls from several individuals in the community requesting the fact that I would recommend to the Board of Education arming staff in this district. And my reply was absolutely categorically no. It's not something that I would ever recommend. I do not think it's appropriate for our staff members to be armed in our schools. And that's exactly what I told to Matt Jablonsky today. So, there's a lot of debate going around, whether it's arming metal detectors, you know, when, when these type of situations occur, they create a frenzy, and for lack of a better term. And we'll address them as they come individually, but yes, thank you, Kevin, no, absolutely not. And it's something that I would never, ever recommend.
Anybody else want to weigh on that? Okay. Two other quick things on the Board of Education stuff.
I was driving down Middle Avenue today, Mr. Wall, and I noticed there's a huge pond, looks like it's a retention pond that's on the Middle Avenue side of our complex. Is that a retention pond to store water? Because it looked like you could put a boat out there. It's, it sits to the south of our drive that goes into the complex off of Middle Avenue.
Oh, are you talking about the, for the media center? On the corner of?
At the, at the, no, I'm sorry, at the sports complex.
Oh, sports, I'm sorry. Where, where?
The road that goes in, which would be the construction road and probably eventually the road, but to the left of that is a very large pond, and it's got the residual binders up that go around it, but it was a pretty deep.
Deep hole?
Yeah. I'm assuming that's a, okay. All right. And the last thing that I have, and I forgot to do this on the Board of Education report, but at the last school board meeting at Oakwood, we received a presentation from the staff there in regards to Mr. Worth and his passing and some books that they were donating to McKinley. And the board and Dr. Jama, Ms. Clickinger, as well as our staff attorney, Mr. Lane, took up a donation to also donate some books. And Mr. Bax had an opportunity to deliver the books that were donated, as well as the ones that he went out and purchased from us, but I did receive a thank you card. It said, "Dear Board of Education, I wanted to say thank you for the generous donation of books to our McKinley Library. Dan Worth was a remarkable man that loved McKinley. These books will help us as we keep his spirit alive. Thank you so much for your act of kindness. Sincerely, Mrs. Fitz." So, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that thank you card from McKinley.
So, that being said, on to the next Board Policies and Regulations, second reading, to approve the second reading and adoption of the following board policy and regulation. Field trips, both items there. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve that as read.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Gebhardt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gebhardt. Any discussion?
No. He did the first. Second was down here.
Second was?
Either one.
Mr. Elick was the second. Any other discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye. Motion carried. We have no executive session, so if there's no further business before the board, I'll accept a motion to adjourn for the night's meeting.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Elick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gebhardt. Any discussion? Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker?
Aye. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.
Is this, is this retention pond? Is that?